Let's go ahead and call this virtual meeting of the Library Board of Trustees. Let's start our meeting of February 11th, 2021. And just as a reminder pursuant to Section 3 of Executive Order N 2920 issued by Governor Newsom on March 17th, 2020, the regular meeting of the Library Board of Trustees for tonight, February 11th, will be conducted remotely and held by video conference. And then please be advised that pursuant to the executive order and to ensure the health and safety of the public by limiting human contact, the council chambers will not be open for this meeting and the trustees are participating remotely and will not be in physical, we will not be physically present in the council chambers and that goes for the staff also. And to maximize public safety, members of the public can observe the meeting via Zoom in one of the methods below and you're either going to the Library Board of Trustees homepage and then there's a Zoom link and to join us. Okay. And again, and if you're listening remotely, then you're just calling the 669 number and I think that's it. And I think, Sean, are you gonna do the roll call?
I will. Okay. Bianca Richards?
Present.
David Ewens?
Present.
Annie Chang?
Present.
Dr. Melina?
Present.
Dean Surwin?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. And then can I just move up the introductions of the new trustee? Is that?
Absolutely.
Okay. So we'd like to welcome tonight our newest member, Dean Surwin. So thank you for being a part of this. And Dean, you want to take like a minute to introduce yourself? And Dean, do you know everybody or should we go around and introduce ourselves? Are you familiar with all of us or?
I'm pretty sure that I've met everyone, at least in passing. I know David because he was on the Board of Trustees back when I was showing up with Howard and was also very kind to come and make phone calls.
Well, how about, how about, well, let's introduce you and then we'll go around and we'll each take a minute to say hello to you. So take it away.
So I'm Dean Surwin. I'm an intellectual property and entertainment lawyer and consultant here in South Pasadena. I'm kind of a serial volunteer. I've been involved with SPEF, I'm involved with Spark, I've been involved with Sally on, what is it now, six or seven campaigns, including I, the only one I chaired was Measure A, so I'm responsible for your extra sales tax. Yeah. And I've been involved with Boy Scouts for about a decade. I'm sort of weaning that out, although they're trying to get me to do something else. Oh, I see the Measure U sign in the background there, Sally. I'm married to my lovely wife Lynn, who is a college English professor currently on sabbatical. I have boy-girl twins that are seniors and they are pissed. My son is going to be a duck and my daughter will be going somewhere in New York City, either Pace or NYU, we're waiting to find out which. And I have my dog who's not with me here, but who will be here from time to time on Zoom with us, Dusty. And that's about it.
All right, well, well, thank you again and we, we welcome your lived experience to the Board of Trustees. So why don't we just quickly, again, I'm Bianca Richards, lifelong resident of South Pasadena and I'm currently the Board President of the Board of Trustees. So welcome again, Dean. And why don't we go and I'm just looking at my camera here. David, you want to just say hello and?
Yeah, hi Dean, I'm Dave Ewens and I'm, I've been on the board for three years and I'm filling in for one more year to complete the term of someone who was unable to complete their term. And also been in South Pasadena in multiple years, involved in various community events and so on.
Thank you. And Annie?
Hi, everyone. I realize I actually haven't been formally introduced to Mayor Mahmoud or to Sally either. So great to meet everyone. I'm Annie Chang, I've been on the board for one year. I am a nonprofit finance consultant and I have three kids in the city. Two of them are at Marengo and one of them is two and will be going to Marengo soon. I'm really excited to get to know and work with you all this year.
Well, and then I'm glad that you then get to meet Sally and Mayor Mahmoud officially tonight. So thank you, Annie. Mario?
Hi, I'm Mario Melina. I've lived in South Pasadena for 31 years and I've been on the Board Trustees for about a year and I love libraries.
Yay. Sally?
Sally Kilby and I'm a retired city clerk and I have fun with various measures and I was following the development of the foundation for the library. And now I have another hat on, the president of the Friends of the South Pasadena Public Library.
Yay. And Mayor Mahmoud?
Hi. So I have been a resident, let's see, for, it's gonna be really close, Mario. If, if I was a better mathematician, I've got 31 plus 32. Oh, I beat you by a year. I've got 32 years here in South Pasadena. I am a retired lawyer, but I put that to good use reviewing a lot of contracts and, and bills and all sorts of stuff with the city and other organizations. And Annie, your background seems particularly interesting as I was just
I'm interested.
reviewing bylaws for a nascent nonprofit right now. So we may want to talk later on.
I'm gonna, I need it first.
We should. Happy to.
Well, thank you, thank you, everybody and happy Lunar New Year. Is that correct, Annie? Yes. So this is a good way to start the Lunar New Year. Go the Year of the Ox. All right, so let's continue on here. There's no presentations and are, is there any public comment?
No public comment.
Okay, thank you. And so let's move on to our action items. And did you all get a chance to review the minutes of our last meeting in January?
I did and I have a question. Towards the end of the meeting, I think we had a discussion about the Friends of the Library and we added, I believe, the 21st Century Committee language to the, the work plan, but it's not in the minutes.
We, well, we, I don't think we took an action. I think we just said we would table it and bring it back to this meeting, so.
I know that, but that's not even recorded in the minutes at all.
Okay, well.
There's no, there's no, you know, we discussed this or we tabled it, but there's, there's just no mention of it.
Isn't it? It's mentioned in item four.
That we discussed it and we want to make these changes and it'll come.
Okay, you're right, you're right, you're right.
You see it?
You're right.
Yep.
I just thought chronologically because it was at the end of the meeting, I looked forward at the end of the meeting. Never mind.
Thanks, David, for catching that. And thanks, Mario, for, you know, bringing that up. Any other comments or questions for, so do we have a motion then to approve the minutes of January 14th?
I can move.
I'll second.
All right, so the, there's been a motion by David and a second by Mario for the minutes of January 14th. All, Sean will do the.
Yeah. Okay. Bianca Richards?
Aye.
David Ewens?
Yes.
Annie Chang?
Yes.
Dr. Melina?
Yes.
Dean Surwin?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. And then our next action item is number four. Now then, in your packets tonight, today, well, whenever you looked at your packets, you should have gotten the new updated Library Board of Trustees work plan. We did talk about this last month and we did make some corrections and additions. Put that on screen, Bianca, just if you want me to do that, I can put it on screen. Do you guys, should we put it on screen then?
Okay.
Thanks, Kathy. Yeah, and I think we added, like we had talked about, the fundraising issues and the 21st century issues and those were added down at the bottom. Do you see everybody down at the bottom there? That was kind of added and I don't, I think everything else was okay. What, I think that was what are the newest issues were.
So one other thing on this, I'm looking at the memo from Kathy dated February 11th, 2021, and it also includes a radio frequency identification system.
Yeah, so when we went to council to propose the, the projects that would be like the first projects that might be addressed, that was one of them. So I don't think we made anything that specific in the, in the work plan because it's more about what, what role does the trustees have in terms of helping to get this up and running and off the ground. So yeah, the RFID and was one of the main projects that we proposed as a, as a first, as a priority.
So, so the, I think what was generally viewed in all that sequence of events that went on there was the, the first thing that had to happen was that the committee needed to be established. And, and then the project, then the committee, 21st Century Committee I'm talking about, would then take the list of projects that the library had available at that time, of which Kathy highlighted two major ones, and then determine how they would raise the funds for them through major fundraising efforts, not through just the, the normal fundraising efforts that the Friends of the Library normally do.
And I think that, you know, we, we took those projects to the city council and they approved them, but I'm assuming, Diana, you can, you can help us understand that, but that if we want to revisit that and, you know, it's been a while and look at our needs afresh and then go back to council and say, we'd like to change our priorities, I'm sure that that's something that, that can be done.
Absolutely.
But as, so, so what we have in front of us here, are, are there any other comments or concerns or questions so that we can move to approve of this with, you know, in regards to some of the comments that we talked about?
The issue I have with the 21st Century Committee and getting it established is, is the onus is on the Friends of the Library. They, they took the ownership of the committee and, and so they, they need to instigate it and, and do something to get it rolling before the Library Board of Trustees can basically get involved.
Right, and that's why on the, that's why on the work plan, I, I sort of broad in terms of what the, what the work plan is, is asking you guys to focus on, which is to pick someone to be the liaison to that committee and also again, just sort of to help the friends in whatever way the, it's decided would be helpful, you know? So I think there's, number seven on the agenda is to discuss maybe in more detail with Sally, the 21st Century Committee and what steps maybe you want to take next. But I think as far as the work plan goes, unless you guys want to amend the recommendation and amend it and we can approve it with an amended language, if the language is not what you, what you wanted to see.
I, I think it's a bit of a stretch right now to say the 21st Century Committee is an active functioning committee of the Friends of the Library.
Okay, so we can.
Well, can, can we ask Sally, isn't Sally the liaison person?
Yeah.
Well, and that's the desired outcome.
Yeah.
Saying that exists now, we're saying that's what we want, where we want to go, right?
I'd like to know, Sally, can you tell us if the committee exists?
The committee has been established in the bylaws, but as far as I, I know there, there really hasn't been any first steps and I haven't had a meeting with the group yet. That will be next week and I will bring it up. There are a number of changes on the board, only a couple of the longtime people who know the history have returned and it's been hard to recruit people for important positions like in finance and in fundraising. So in a way, it might be kind of going back a bit to start over with new people and, and new understandings and to explain it a little bit more. And I, actually, this packet was the first time I, I heard that this issue was, was coming up.
But it, it does say that our desired outcome is that there be a functioning committee.
Yes, and that, that seems
Fair enough.
seems perfect.
So I'm gonna move approval of the work plan.
Second.
Okay. So it's been moved and second for.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
David.
Dean.
Dean, oh, sorry, sorry, Dean, sorry.
Thank you. So Bianca Richards?
Yes.
David Ewens?
Yeah.
Annie Chang?
Yes.
Dr. Melina?
Yes.
Dean Surwin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on to our discussion items now, the, in the new Library Board of Trustees manual, so Kathy, you want to? Yeah. Yeah, so as you know, one of our objectives with the policies was to take what we've been calling for many years, the Library Board of Trustees manual and create two separate documents, one that would actually be the administrative policies manual that the staff can use and that we can put on the website, et cetera. And then the other one would be something really that is just for the Board of Trustees. So we basically took the old manual and just sort of separated them and so everything that you're seeing here, I can share my screen and then we'll have the, we'll have the list in front of us. So these things are, again, these are all the items that were in the old manual that apply specifically to the board. And then there are some new things that as I went through it, I thought these are things that should be in this manual for new board members so that they know about things like the special library tax or, you know, the 21st Century Committee for the library or how the Friends work. So anywhere in that second column where it says new, those are things that were not in the version that you have seen, you know, previously when you joined the board. And I did talk with Bianca and we, she helped also to come up with some of the, the things that she thought would be good to add. The other thing that I wanted to note, just so you're aware, is that we had a little discussion about some things like Brown Act and, and some of the things that the city clerk provides and is sort of responsible for. And I don't necessarily want to duplicate those efforts, so I, I talked to her about whether she had any intention of putting the commissioners orientation packet online, so it's something we could just link to. And I think she thought that was a good idea, so we'll see where that goes. But basically, the, the purpose of looking at this now is to get any feedback about, about the actual contents and whether there are things that you would like added or changed. And then the other thing to, to be cognizant of is that many of these things are super out of date. So once we actually decide we want that content, we do have to go back and actually look at things like the trustees' goals, which in my opinion, you know, I would recommend that we remove that and, and have our work plan, since we have a work plan. There's some things here that we would want to probably look at in more detail, sort of like we're doing with the policies. But those, that particular issue is not on the, you know, we're not going to make any of those decisions tonight, but we do want to make sure we're covering all the content that, that you think would be useful. Yeah, and then how, how I approach this is like when we're looking at this as a, as a new trustee, and I remember when I came on, I, you know, there was a big learning curve. And so that's how kind of I was looking, looking at it. So that's where I gave my feedback. So, you know, some of you, you're the newer trustees, you know, you might want to think of it that way, that we could add to this, what would be important, what, you know, you would feel that would help you as a trustee.
So, so I like the format, but I do have a number of questions and are we gonna discuss this now or how are we gonna deal with some of the details of this?
Well, I think that it's good to, we can discuss the questions and now and so that we can come back later with, with whatever, you know, changes or edits we want to make. So I think we should have a, the discussion now so that we can make changes.
So on, on page six, where it talks about the duties, functions, responsibilities, this looks like it, it may have been pulled from somewhere else, but employ a competent and qualified city librarian. Do we employ the librarian or does the city employ the librarian and how does that work?
Well, that's part of our, that's part of the, sorry, let me stop sharing my screen since I'm sharing things that I didn't mean to share. That's part of the discussion that we have on our work plan, which is to look at what is the, the responsibility of the, the board in terms of, in terms of that. So there, there are quite a few things, I think, on this trustee manual that tie into that whole process of looking at that, at the roles and responsibilities. So I think those things will come to, you know, as, as we work through that, these are the things that are going to get updated.
And I will add that in particular, Dr. Melina, is a, I would say it's a sensitive issue because most of the commissions are, well, all of the commissions, with the potential exception of this one, are advisory to city council. This one, by virtue, as I recall, of state law, does suggest that it may operate independently, but then the library director reports to the city manager and all department heads, all other department heads report and are hired by the city manager with the city council only hiring the city attorney and the, and the city manager. So we haven't quite worked through this issue yet to reconcile exactly where we land. There is a bit of tension in, in the present way that, go ahead.
So if you go over to page 21, it talks about, you prescribe the duties and powers of the librarian. So to me, it, it's, in reading through this, I kind of get the impression that the trustees are responsible for interviewing and higher, interviewing and recommending to the city council a new, a new librarian, should that need arise. But I always assumed, and I think it's still correct, that the person's an employee of the city and although we oversee and evaluate, we don't actually employ.
That's correct. I think that's correct. I think that the, the question about, I think that historically, and I think even according to the, to the statutes, is that you play a part in recruiting and evaluating and making the recommendation to the city manager about whom to hire. But ultimately, I believe it's the city, the city's decision and, and the city manager is my direct supervisor who takes care of disciplinary stuff and, and all that kind of stuff. But again, you'll see there's an attachment, one of these items is a very elaborate evaluation form for the city manager that I, my understanding is no one has used that in, in decades. So again, something that we kind of need to work through, what is, what is the current practice, what should it be, and then update the manual accordingly.
So another thing that came up on this is item number six, assist in the preparation of the annual budget. And I think we do that, but I'm wondering if we shouldn't, if we do have any role in reviewing the financial performance of the library, especially against budget?
I think that that's another one that's, that's sort of, it's sort of hard to know what exactly goes on, but the way that it's been in practice since I've been here is that the staff kind of puts together the budget, they may talk to the board about, these are the things that, you know, these are the priorities that we think we, we want to try to get funded, but the staff really puts the proposal together and then submits that to the city. So there's input from the board and then in terms of reporting back to you, we can report back to you as regularly, you know, if you want every, if you wanted every meeting, the, you know, the trial, that's fine, we can do that every meeting and just go over, you know, where we stand in the different accounts, what, what the money, what we've spent, what we're thinking of spending and what's happening. So yeah, we can definitely.
Kathy, if you recall, I think it's got a little, you know, discombobulated with the COVID thing and all of that, but if you recall, what we were doing was we were basically going over it about quarterly. You know, about quarterly, you would pretend or you or Steve would be presenting the, the, where we stood versus, you know, actual versus current budget.
Right.
And, and Mario, our input really wasn't, comes down more to looking at some of the line items and maybe making suggestions if we think that, is that really going to happen and, you know, based upon previous experience.
Well, I would certainly welcome.
Minor adjustment, minor justice.
I would certainly welcome a quarterly report on where the financial situation of the library is, especially in, in response to the budget that's submitted and approved by the city council. The other thing I was wondering about is, and there's something in here, but it's mostly blank, about the, there was a bond that helps fund the library and what our role is in that.
So the library special tax is currently, I, it's up for renewal in 2024. So the board's role is, you know, as, as appointed officials, you can't advocate for that measure when it's on the ballot, but obviously having a strategy about how to, to inform the community about what the library does and what, what we provide and, and the facts of the matter. The board obviously would be helping to get that message out in the community when the time comes.
With a slight modification, the board cannot advocate. However, individual members can. They, they don't forego their First Amendment rights and they can identify themselves as a member of the Library Board of Trustees, but the board itself cannot advocate.
And Kathy, do, do you actually have a budget now or are we still in budget limbo?
We're still in budget limbo and I, that's part of the reason that I think reporting to you guys on the budget this year has been a little off because what happened in, in June is that the, the council adopted a continuations budget, which was basically adopting exactly last year's budget, but last year's budget is, is not realistic in, in, in this year's reality. So basically, we have a budget that we actually can't spend as much as some of those line items say, because that's not where the budget will ultimately end up. So my understanding is that the, the, the actual budget for the fiscal year will go to council on March 17th. And my understanding, you know, I've, I've submitted, it's basically the same budget proposal that I submitted last spring, except for a few adjustments in the last month or so that mostly have to do with COVID and things like the. that mostly have to do with COVID and things like the porta potty and and some interior building things that um, we need to have funded. So it's it's the same request that I would have gone over with you last spring. Um, it's very similar. There's very few changes. And we can certainly go over it again. And my understanding is that as of now, that that is still in the budget. It, I I have not seen what is going to go to council. I don't know if they have that finalized yet. But I was told that as of now, everything that I asked for is is still in the budget.
So so maybe this is addressed to uh, Mayor Mamu. Um, if it's going to council in March, the budget for uh, twenty, twenty twenty-one.
Correct.
Right? Okay, we're going to be turning right around sometime in April and May to do the budget for uh, twenty-one, twenty-two.
That is also correct. I was going to add that because of having to reconcile a lot of um, authorized, basically moving money around accounts that was not recorded um, for years and years and years. That's why the certified annual financial audit was, audit report was delayed. Um, that's why we were, that's why there was some pushback against um, approving a budget for this fiscal year. Um, a budget for this fiscal year, I understand, is to be presented to the finance commission at its meeting, which is the fourth Thursday, I believe, of the um, month. But yes, you're right. And fortunately, we have um, an assistant, an interim assistant city manager, who um, is a former finance director, as well as being a former um, city manager herself. And um, we've hired some supplemental personnel to assist. And so um, the anticipation is within a couple of months, I think that we are going to be entirely caught up.
Well, Kathy, uh, I don't know if 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 I'm out of line, but should we then for the, for the March, a board of trustees, can we put on the agenda to talk about then the budget?
Absolutely. Um, it'll, yes, because by then the finance committee will have looked at it. So we'll have a sense of of what is being proposed and and what will probably go to council.
Okay.
Just so you guys know, I've already asked the staff to start thinking about um, what requests they might have for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, because obviously this turnaround is going to be really fast, you know. Um, so they're starting to think about that. And we have a pretty good handle on things like part-time staffing, because we did a big analysis last year. So um, I think we'll be able to put together our our request for twenty-one, twenty-two pretty, pretty quickly and get it to you guys to review in plenty of time to be part of the cycle. And then in terms of this year's spending, um, because we've been asked basically to be very conservative and and not spend, because the the final budget doesn't exist and isn't approved. Um, we're trying to just be really poised, so that if if it goes to council on March seventeenth and they approve it and the monies that we asked for are there, that we're ready to go and order whatever those things are. So for example, some of the the shelving projects, um, you know, we're going to have all the bids done and the memos written and the purchase order request ready, so that if the money ends up being approved, we can right away um, place those orders, because it's so late in the fiscal year, you know. I mean, you know, it's, we, you know, April, May, basically for us, because we can't spend way into June and get the invoices in time.
All right.
I ask a specific question since we're on the um, topic of the budget. On like, on page twelve, it has the differences between advisory administrative and what South Pasadena um, is, uh, abides by, I guess. I just questioned the language there on, the director prepares the budget with input backslash approval from the trustees. Um, like, where would we make it where it would be approval from the trustees? That, right, like, we would see the budget and then we would, I know that us approving it doesn't mean that it's adopted, because it'll go to city council, but just that we would need to make a motion as the board, like, is that something that needs to be amended here for that? Or is that like a city protocol?
I, so this document that we're looking at, that was last updated in nineteen ninety-eight. So this is, whoever was the city librarian at the time, um, kind of took a publication that came out from the California Library Association at that time, that explained the statutory authority and the difference between advisory and administrative. Someone came up with this amalgamation that that, you know, advisory is this, administrative is this, and here's what South Pasadena is. And that's my whole question. I don't know who came up with that or whether it's legitimate to to make those adjustments. Um, so this is part, again, of the whole conversation about roles and responsibilities. And I think that conversation needs to happen before we know how to, how to update this. But certainly, um, the board could definitely approve, you know, we could, it would be an action item. You know, you would have been talking with us about the budget as we go through the budget cycle. And then, once we have what we want and what you guys want, it could be an action item for you to approve. And that just tells the city that that you're, you know, again, they adopt it. They can say no to anything that we propose. Um, but at least they would know that that you had weighed in and these were your, this is what you wanted.
So in in the bylaws, under section four, it says that the board of trustees will review the annual budget prior to submission to the city manager.
Right.
So it kind of implies that we look at it and bless it.
Right. Yeah, and I think what is.
The suggestions and then, you know, reach agreement and bless it.
Right, and and I think Annie, you know, she's bringing up that it says with input and approval. So, you know, is it, is it an action item for you? Or is it just a blessing, you know? So I, but I, you know.
But but to me, this document that you're talking about, dated seven of ninety-eight, is a digest. And the controlling document should be the bylaws, I would think.
That's absolutely correct, yeah.
So then that's part of the next steps in the work is just kind of archiving this or doing what we do need to make that clear.
Right. Yeah, like I said, I mean, many of these items that are are here are taken exactly as they were in the old manual and they haven't been reviewed in a very long time. So I think, over time, as we, as we bring these to you as action items to eliminate um, an item from the manual or to make such and such an adjustment to the manual, this will be much cleaner and there'll be a lot less uh, duplicative information. I mean, again, there's, there's a goals, there's a duties, there's a bylaws. Like, if you have bylaws, why do you need a, why do you need a separate item in the manual that lists your duties? Because your duties are in the bylaws or, you know, maybe they wanted something a little more easier to read or easier to digest, I don't know. But yeah, there's, the bottom line is the bylaws are what what we should be following. And then these are the things we need to look at and and perhaps uh, make some edits or get rid of them altogether.
But I think just as, again, as it, as an overview, uh, the, Kathy, we pulled out the sections that we felt were pertinent to the library board of trustees as opposed to the library staff. So this overview is more to do with the library board of trustees. And this uh, this is, are the points that we want to be part of the trustees manual and not all the other stuff. I, you know, like David, maybe like you and I, I think, had a thicker manual that had lots and lots and lots of policies. And so we're trying to just weed this down to just for the the trustees. Is that kind of correct? Is that sort of a good overview, Kathy?
I think so, yeah. And I, and again, all I really wanted from you guys today is is if you've looked through this table of contents and there's some burning question that you think, gosh, as a trustee, I want to know, I I really can't do my job without knowing more about the, how the organization works or who's on the staff or whatever it might be. Um, I want to just capture that information so that we can add it to this. And then what I would suggest is that in at our March meeting, we actually, you guys actually take some actions to kind of clean up some of these things that um, are either no longer relevant or are in conflict with the bylaws or whatever the case may be. And I, and I can bring those recommendations to you guys and say, here's, here's what I think this item is no longer um, useful or or relevant.
But you know, I just, I, relative to what Bianca said, I do think we need to have the policies.
Yeah, the policies, absolutely. I have that document and I'm, I can send it to you. We're revising that one too. And that's on your work plan is to, we need to go through all those policies.
Yeah, I understand that, but I just think that the trustees should have a comprehensive collection of the policies that are in force at the time.
Yeah, what we thought we would do is combine the two documents into one big PDF that you can actually link from. So if you're in some section of the trustee manual and it makes reference to a policy that you could just link and go to it. Um, and then for the staff, they would obviously just have the piece that's the man, you know, the policy manual piece. But yeah, I thought that the easiest thing to do is if it's all one PDF that you can easily link back and forth between the trustee part and the policy part. And of course, we print you a copy too. You know, we've always printed copies in the past. Um, but again, I didn't, I haven't printed copies of the this separated policy manual, because the policies are are all the same as what you already have. We haven't really made very many changes yet. We have a whole list of them to have you look at in March. Um, but yes, you absolutely need the policy manual. I mean, there's many places here where it references policies that you you need to know.
Yeah, 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 no. Okay, any other questions or comments in regards to this discussion item number six? All right, so I think we have our charts here for going forward. Um, and then number seven, the Twenty-First Century Committee for the library. So that's our next discussion. Are you, you're leading that Kathy again, this.
Yeah, I mean, I guess this is sort of um, a conversation again about, and you know, Sally's brand new as Friends president, so I don't know how far we'll we'll get. But um, Sally, at the meeting, at the last trustee meeting, the question was, what is the, what is the board of trustees' role and and responsibility as it relates to this fundraising committee? Um, and that was spelled out in 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 the Friends. Um, you know, some of these things have been spelled out and I included that in the packet. But I think one of the things is that there would be a board member that would be a liaison to Friends Committee. So that's something we could talk about now. Um, and then I don't know if you have thoughts about, you know, what, how can the, how can the board help you, help the Friends make this happen?
I will have to bring this topic up. It will be new to uh, most of the people there. And um, I think Ellen and Kristen are really the only uh, longtime members of of the Friends who have remained. Um, so I've carefully looked through every um, every page of the packet on this topic. David, thank you. Did you go through and do that whole timeline?
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh. I had forgotten, but thank you so much, because that brought back all those different nuances and things and the developments that had happened. Um, I I'm just, I'm just not certain of the reaction. Um, as I mentioned, there are vacant positions. It's hard to recruit people. We have new people. Uh, and of course, we're all on Zoom. We're not really getting together at any time. Um, but um, it's, it'll be on the agenda next, next week. And um, I will introduce this and have a conversation about it and see what the um, the group wants to do. The committee has been established. Um, it's in the bylaws, I've seen that. Uh, but there is no one uh, in that position to be the head of that. And it's not a board position at this point.
Does the board of trustees want to um, talk about who who they would perhaps assign as liaison? Does the board of trustees think they should, we need a subcommittee, you know, to talk about this?
Don't we already have someone who was a liaison to the uh, to the Friends of the library?
The Friends of the library, but the 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 description of the Twenty-First Century Committee specifies that there would be a person specifically to that commit, that subcommittee. It could be the same person, but um, it's sort of a different responsibility or a different role.
Yeah, when I looked at all of this, it looks to me that there's really no difference between the Twenty-First Century Committee and the Friends of the library. They're not setting up a separate foundation. And from a legal standpoint, it's all one organization and and
Right.
a committee of a, it's still the same group. And if they come to you and make a recommendation, it's still up to the uh, the full.
Right.
Board. So I'm not sure that, why we would want to have more than one.
Might be good to have the same person, anyway.
Well, yeah, I'm just worried it would create confusion if you've got two different people, because then the right hand never knows what the left is doing.
Hmm, hmm.
Dr. Molina, I will say that the um, the model for establishing the subcommittee, once it was clear that the Friends wanted to retain some authority, I guess, over this committee, is the um, the the Friends of the, God, Sally, help me. It's the library con, it's a restoration concert series.
Yeah.
At the library, which operates pretty much, even though it does not have a separate legal status and it is folded in as a subcommittee to the Friends under the Friends um, bylaws, it operates completely independently, pretty much.
But first of all, I I thought that that was eliminated.
No.
No, that, what was eliminated was the summer festival. The restoration concert committee is still doing what it does. And that's a eight concert series every year. What 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 they're no longer doing is a summer festival.
And I think, I I.
Any money for this?
That it, their proceeds go directly, it gets merged, co-mingled with the Friends. It's not maintained separately. But I will tell you that it's my firm belief that um, assuming that we're out of COVID next summer, that the Restoration Concert Committee will likely um, attempt to bring back the summer series. Because it was a huge, no?
Kathy, speak to that.
Um, the the Friends Board um, has have voted not to support that endeavor. Um.
Oh.
The library didn't want to do so either. So they 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 are doing their their regular concert series that they've always done. Um, they found a different not-for-profit, a not-for-profit partner to do a festival with. So they will be doing that independently. The people who are interested in that will do that um, with this other organization.
But when I was reading through this, it appeared that the restoration concerts were to be used for the large public room.
That is what they say that they use their proceeds for. Um, yeah, that's what they say they use their proceeds for, but ultimately, it's up to the Friends. I mean, the Friends Board, it's their money, so it's up to them what happens to it.
So go back to my question. Have we ever received any money, any proceeds from those concerts?
Yes, they funded the library.
You mean, have the library received money?
Yes.
I don't know about that.
Well, the library, you mean.
Well, go ahead, Kathy.
So so the the restoration concerts, when they have uh, proceeds, they will say to the librarian and the the Friends Board, what what is the library need? Can we help you with something? Um, and then they will try to, they will give money, but it's, the Friends gives, gives us the money. They've also done things like um, you know, purchased the Steinway piano and purchased all the chairs for the community room. You know, they've, they've actually, you know, directly and purchased things versus giving the money to us. So it.
Yeah, but it's not like the model. Yeah, but it's not like the model of the bookstore where all the money comes into the bookstore and it all goes to the Friends of the Library and decided dispersing, you know, by the board.
Yeah, the Restoration Concerts have a little bit more kind of say about what the proceeds will do. But ultimately, it's really up to the board, but.
Yeah, so I'm still concerned. I still have, I'm having a hard time following the trail of the money. We have these concerts which are allegedly to benefit the library. And I'm trying to find out, is there, are there proceeds and where do they go, what, what they spent on?
So what I would suggest is that we share with you guys the Friends balance sheet. And so you can kind of see and, and see the details and I can, I can share that. I don't have that handy.
You know Kathy as well, Kay Rolster and
Kathy.
Thank you. They did quite an extensive list of all the things they have funded over the years. And they presented it to the board, not last, 2019.
Yeah.
So there is that very extensive list that they came up with.
I mean, Mario, just, this is sort of a, a hard thing to talk about because it has been a contentious issue amongst the Friends over the years that the Restoration Concerts are part of the Friends and that the Friends Board is ultimately responsible and, and the decisions are up to them. The Restoration Concerts operate very independently and sometimes feel so independent that they, I think, kind of forget that it's up to the Friends what happens.
So, so are they continuing?
Yes, they, they are continuing to do the same type of thing that they've done for 20 years, 20 plus years, which is a eight concert series every year.
And will we receive money from that?
What's that?
Will we receive money from that?
Whatever proceeds they have, yes, that goes to the Friends. And then the Friends, the way that, the way that the Friends helps us is that every year we tell them, we put in a request and say, can you give us money for all of these things? And that's part of their budgeting process. And so I don't know if it's dollar for dollar where the dot, whether it came from bookstore funds or from membership donations or from Restoration Concerts proceeds. Like I don't see that side of it. So all the funds come into the Friends. We make our request and then they, they fund the things that they agree to fund. But yes, there, there's proceeds and they go into the Friends coffers and then the Friends spend that money.
Ellen has been working for several years to get this group in, into line. And I think spent the whole last year working with Restoration Concerts. And I mean, basically they need to be their own 501(c)(3), but for right now, we're going down the path of trying to keep them on the path and not going off on their own.
Where, where things seem to change.
What?
Where, where things seem to change was when the Restoration Concert came up with the festival. And the festival had very large amounts of money associated with it. A large impact on the city and, and, and you know, things and the library, they have very large impact generally. And that's when it kind of got larger than the Restoration Concerts had been before, which was just a series of concerts being held in the community room with a limited number of subscribers basically going to it. So it changed with the festival.
Do they have financial audits? Does the Friends get a financial audit?
They do.
Can we get copies of that too? Is that possible at like the next upcoming meeting?
I can talk to Sally and Sally can talk to you. Sally, when's, when's the, the, the meeting next week? And David, are you, what did we decide? Are you continuing to be the liaison or what? Had we talked about that as a board?
Yeah, yeah. Last board meeting, that, that's what was decided.
You'll continue. Yeah. And I, and I'm, I'll be your alter, and I'm your alternate or, okay. And when's, when's the meeting again?
The 18th, Thursday at 1:00 PM.
And is, it, it is open to the public. Anybody can attend or not.
No, I mean, it's, they're a private not-for-profit.
It's not a public.
Okay.
Yeah. So Mario, I, I, I think I under, I mean, I think I kind of understand where you're coming from, which is.
I do too.
Are they making money for the library? Why are they doing this under the Friends, right? So, so yes, they do bring in some money, but that is not their sole purpose. They're, they're, in their mind, a big part of their purpose is, is that somehow putting on concerts does help the library because it raises the library's profile and makes people like the library. So they, they see all these benefits that are not monetary, that they, they feel fit into the, the Friends of the Library's mission. The Friends have just changed their mission statement to make it a little more focused on actually fundraising.
And I did a whole, like a chart, org chart, because I was trying to get my mind around all these different elements. And I use the mission, which is to raise awareness and funds for the South Pasadena Public Library. So everything has to fall under that. Restoration Concerts, under fundraising.
Yeah. And, and again, their objective, the, the, the committee members, their objective is to put on a concert and if there's leftover money, great. Then we made money and it can help the library versus the bookstore whose objective is to bring in as much money as possible for the library. So it, it's, it's sort of a Friends issue that, that has, has been a struggle for a while.
With legal advice as well.
Yeah.
And this, this kind of also then gets into the 21st century committee. Because it looks to me like the 21st century committee is really structured or, or the, the original intent was to create a, almost like capital campaign for the library. And I would hate to see this thing degenerate into, let's hope we break even. Because that would not be the purpose. The purpose really is to help us with capital projects that we need for the library. And I don't want someone generating big events that break even and don't bring any money for those projects.
Yeah, I don't think that's, I don't think that's a risk. I mean, I think the, the intention, at least my sense of, of these conversations was that the Friends wanted under their umbrella because they, well, not even that, that they, the Friends did not feel comfortable supporting a separate foundation because they felt that it would, you know.
Originally.
What's that?
Originally they did for at least a year and a half.
Okay, and then they changed their minds.
Yeah. Oh yeah, that was for quite a while. They didn't want to have anything to do with it.
Right. So, so basically it was either, it was either create this committee under the Friends umbrella and try to make something work, you know, a, a major gifts capital campaign type program work or not have one at all. Because everyone felt pretty strongly that if the Friends were not going to support a library foundation in a, in a small town like this, then no one, you, you know, it's illegitimate. Like how, you know, you can't have a, a foundation that the Friends of the Library is like, doesn't support and won't speak about. So that's, so that's how we ended up with this situation, which is that there's this, there's the idea of a subcommittee that would be, idea is that they would do capital fundraising, looking for major gifts, a very small team of people. And basically at this point, the Friends have updated their bylaws to, to make that structure all possible, but there are no bodies to do the work. The, the Library Board of Trustees has designated $4,000 to pay for a consultant to help put the structure of this committee in place and try to identify people who can serve on it and, and put all the pieces together so that it would be functional. But the, but it's not going to be the existing Friends Board members. It's, it's not, again, the, the Restoration Concerts, there's a whole bunch of people on that subcommittee. They don't come to Friends Board meetings. You know, they really do operate, they only deal with the Restoration Concerts.
They have a representative on the board.
Yes, they do. And as with this, as a meeting, committee, yeah, as with this committee. So it's basically, this is, we, we've ended up with, this is hopefully our best chance of, of doing this type of fundraising, but there's a lot of work to be done. And a challenge in finding the people to lead that effort.
So Sally, I, I know that you're new. Is $4,000 enough? Is it an appropriate amount of money to help get this started?
To start, to start, I mean, the, the idea was to hire the consultant at the San Marino Library who helped them raise $10 million in 10 years. And I'm just afraid she's going to retire soon because they're waiting so long to hire her. But I mean, to start, I don't know what, where the money's going to come from after that.
I think that that amount, Mario, came from her. I think we said, how mu, how many hours? Need, and she said 40 hours to do, to get you going. And so that's how we came up with that amount, I believe.
The other thing that I, I didn't understand in looking at this is the amount. I mean, I saw that we have this list of things we're going to do. We're going to rewire things, new carpeting, paint, et cetera. Do we really have a realistic idea of what that costs?
No, we have no idea. I thought you said a million.
Well, but we, we, it says a million, but what I'm asking is, how do we come up with that number? Is that a realistic number? And the other thing I want to know is who's going to do the work? So do we envision that city staff will do all this work or is this going to be subcontracted out?
It would not be done by force account. We don't have enough people likely. So it would be a competitively bid contract. It's, it's within a, a public facility. It would be considered a public works project. I would also add that we have gone through, the, the, the issue of the foundation has had, as Kathy has described, a long saga, a long history. And the Friends have had shifting ideas and attitudes towards it. And there have been two important changes, I think, since the Friends last seriously considered this, the present arrangement. One is a significant change in the membership of the Friends Board, who did not want the idea of somebody else raising money for the library that wasn't affiliated with them. But then also, there's been this, this tension that has become attenuated between the Restoration Concert Committee, as, as David noted, after the Summer Festival. And I don't know that that is resolved yet, but we were definitely told, look, you can work in, you know, it, it'll work. The foundation can work independently and they pointed to the Restoration Concert Committee as a model. But given the hiccups that have, and the tension that has now occurred in that relationship and what will hopefully be much larger sums of money, if the, if the goal of the foundation is realized, I have a concern that those tensions that arose between the Restoration Committee and the Library Friends Board will resurface. So I do think it might be an opportune time to reexamine and to question with the Friends, is this still the model that they want to employ? And if so, do they take any responsibility whatsoever for populating that committee? And, and as I recall, David, and it's been so long ago, but I thought we were envisioning that if there was an interest by some members of this board, that perhaps two members of this board, again, if it predicated on an interest, could serve also as members of the foundation, which would then obviate the need to have liaison because you'd have direct members.
Yeah, we, we, we did have include that in there, that it could have up to two people from the board there. I recall going, yeah. But it was also envisioned that the committee would be initially probably three and then growing to five. But it, it definitely is a, a unique kinds of individuals or at least one unique kind of individual that needs to be on that board who is capable of, of soliciting major funds. This is not going to be, you know, selling, I don't know, you know, books. It really isn't. What it's going to be is selling the library to people who will be major donors and also exploring not just people, but also corporations, possibility of getting a bequeathed from. And so we, we went with a, a number of different things before it just sort of petered out. Alan Judson spent a, a good deal of time on it. Brendan spent a good deal of time on it. I've spent a good deal of time on it.
Steve Yaldstedt spent a lifetime on it.
Yeah, Steve would, yes, spent a lot of time trying to get going as well.
Well, it's almost like we need a, a, like a development person who goes after, you know, that's, that's the kind of their.
Being the, almost a professional fundraising kind of person who, who, who knows, and, and someone who knows the community as well. To be able to say, okay, we can go and talk with so-and-so. They, they're a major donor over on KPCC. Let's talk about them, about what we, we're planning to do with the library.
Well, I think a few of us have been on boards where that's been somebody's role is development. And that's all they do is they go out and they make those contacts. They really, you know, are, just they know everything. And so, yeah, it, it does, it, it's going to call for a very kind of specific sort of person.
And do we, do we contemplate that this person would be paid for out of funds generated by the Friends? Or is money from the library going to go for that?
It was, it was contemplated to, to basically get a volunteer to do it.
A volunteer.
Yeah, with a volunteer, hopefully from the community to do it. And, and the money for Cindy Chan was basically just seed money for her to help get the thing going.
And I think part of what her first steps are, are to look at, who are the people in the community that could serve on this committee and what role? Who's the right person for which role? So, so sort of going through that process with her.
Yeah.
To identify who can we recruit to the committee? I mean, we don't even, you know, we have to, we have a list. I mean, at this time, we made a list, but you know, part of what she would help with is to actually recruit people to, to be on that committee and, and do the jobs that, that need to get done.
Now, is she still interested? When was the last time one of us talked with her?
I talked, um, gosh, I have talked, I haven't, I, I've talked to her, it's probably been a year because from the pan, since the pandemic.
Right. I think it's been, been a year ago. Okay.
And, and there's other people. I mean, she ends up, you know, retiring or not wanting to pay. But she seems, I, you know, if time allows, I think she probably will do it with us.
The sound?
So.
Echoing. Okay, okay, you're up.
Door. It might be because Sean and I are too close together.
Yeah, somebody's echoing. Okay.
So you might appoint a subcommittee of two to join with the person who's assigned in the Friends who can engage Cindy and kind of get a, get some foot, footprints going.
Yeah. We, would it, would it help? I don't know. Would it help if we had like a, a meeting or, you know, the, just something with Cindy to kind of go over some of these things before we go any further, you know? I don't know.
Well, with the, with the first person and Cindy and your two designees.
Yeah, I think that's sort of a next step is that, you know, Sally, whoever from the Friends, whoever from the Board, Cindy and myself kind of have that conversation and see what's what. And Cindy has come to the Board, as you know, many times. So she might think we're crazy asking her to come back, but we do have Board members who, who, you know, she's very, very capable of talking through how she would help put this together, you know?
Well, we have, there, because I met her at the very, very end, but we've got, you know, three new Board members that she's never met. So, uh, yeah, I, I don't know. Would it be worth it for her to come and talk to this Board as a whole or not?
The Friends is doing it. I mean, it's got to be the Friends. The Friends is doing it. I mean, it's got to be the Friends.
You should be talking with the Friends. I mean, at this point, I mean, the, the outline that she provided is pretty much what she says, how she would go about it. So if you, if you read her table of contents, you kind of get a good understanding of her process as well.
Well, then. One of the first things though, is that I think we need with such a significant change on the Friends Board, I think we need a, an affirmation by the Friends that this is indeed the model that they wish to pursue. I, I think that's probably the first thing that needs to be done before anything else.
I, I agree.
Yes.
All right. Well, then let's, then, let's leave it at that then. So then Sally will, hopefully that's on your agenda for next week. And then, then you can report back and then we can go from there for the, for the March meeting. Okay. So we'll put it on the March.
Kind of background information you want to share with them? Because again, these, they, they're not going to even know what it is. So I don't know if there's any part of the, the packet that went to this group that you could share with them? Or if you want anything from me or Dave, just David's history? I don't know, but let me know if you.
Yeah, I, you know, I took notes and I marked, marked it all up with the, the salient points that I want to bring up to them. Or, you know, or some of the history, just abbreviated history. But I mean, this is really an excellent time because they see the dire financial situation that has led us all to this realization. We have to have, you know, a larger funding agency. Because now with the pandemic, the city's revenues are down and your budget is going to be down. And, you know, we had done this a few years ago. We've maybe been farther along.
Kathy, all of our information in the board packet is public, correct?
Correct.
So Sally can take all of this material if she wants and use it. Okay.
Yeah, you can use whatever. One of the articles that was, that I had linked to is this one called, Friends and Foundations, is emerged Friends and Foundation right for your library? I mean, that's, that's an example.
The St. Paul one?
Yeah.
So I even talked to them when we were doing this to begin with.
Oh, you did? Good.
Yes.
Yeah, but you know, my concern is the two examples, St. Paul, Minnesota, which is the capital of Minnesota, and San Francisco, which has a population of almost 900,000 people, are very different than South Pasadena, which has a population of, I don't know, 25,000 to 30,000 people.
26,000.
You know, so mounting a big capital campaign here is going to be different and difficult. And you mentioned this took San Marino 10 years. And San Marino is twice our size and probably has a higher per capita kind of income. I think it's a wealthier community. It's, it's going to be a stretch for us to raise a significant amount of money. Not saying it can't be done, but I think it's going to be a stretch and I think we're probably going to have to, or the Friends will probably have to employ some professional help.
If our goal is only a million dollars and, and I, I acknowledge Mario that your question is an apt one, you know, where, where did that number come from? Was it rounded up? Was it rounded down? Was it a guess? So coming at this with fresh eyes, what I, I would follow on to your comment and, and ask that maybe, and Kathy, I don't know if it's asking too much of you, but looking at, I noticed that there's a highest priority, a high priority, and then a low priority. If maybe there could be some minimal investigation into the actual 2021, 2022 anticipated cost of those highest and high priority items, so that we could at least get a foothold on, are we talking about around a million dollars? Are we maybe talking around half a million or five million? Because if it's a million, I think that we could, in, you know, three to five years, potentially come up with that in South Pasadena. But if it's five million, I think that maybe we're looking at, at a, a, a significant revision of our, our plan.
I think that it would be helpful for the board to look at the, the, I think this is a conversation the board has to have. So the, the million dollars, there, there's a capital improvement, capital improvements list, and it has all these things on it. And no dollar amounts connected with most of them. Other RFID, that's a real dollar amount. That's based on church. But in, and, and in terms of the, the kind of remodel stuff, that's not so undefined. I mean, we really have to have that conversation. What are we talking about when we're talking about remodeling? What are, what are we talking about? And, and again, part of this was there was a lot of pressure to, to get this on city council's agenda and make this. And, and you can see the first time that it went to council, they were like, what is this list? This doesn't even make sense. And so we went back with a second list that honed in on a few things. But even that was like sort of under duress. We had to come up with this and it was, there was, you know, we had to bring it and they wanted a dollar amount. And they, not necessarily being the city council, but I think, you know, the city manager in terms of preparing the report, wanted to see that. So the, we really, I, I think the board needs to have a conversation about what are the projects that, that we want to fund and really decide that, because I don't think that's decided.
I, I agree with that. And I also think that when we do that, we should prioritize.
Correct. And that's what Cindy, poor Cindy, you know, she kept saying, what are we raising money for? You know, we can't even do anything until you know what your rate, why are you raising money? So I think that that's a piece that we just didn't explore in enough depth and really didn't, didn't get down to the nitty gritty and figure out exactly what it is that we're talking about. So maybe that's what we can do in March is talk more about that and see if we can come to some consensus.
I wanted to just also, I guess, check my understanding around the current library parcel tax also, which it sounds like it's set to expire in three years, maybe. Is that what that looked like to you? It's just like, and I mean, just for educational purposes, I think, to have an understanding of where that money went to. You know, this eventually is going to become a discussion about, you know, what has been invested in the library. And I'm assuming that there's someone out there thinking about, you know, what happens next after this parcel tax expires in almost like three years. So just to be a little strategic and for us to have some information about where those dollars went, to tell the full story about what's really been invested, because I'm just reading the language from that parcel tax and just seeing like, that there was some intention there for us to stay modern with those funds. So I don't want to have a discussion about that, but just to say like, it'd be great to get more information about how those were spent.
Yeah, I mean, that's sort of, those funds come into the city's coffers and we don't, no one says this exact amount from the parcel tax paid for this exact thing. So we really have to kind of, kind of track and come up with a list of spending that we think would make people happy and say, oh, I'm glad my taxes paid for that thing. But it's not like, there's no direct connection. So we just have to look at where we're spending our money and, and where did it benefit the public and then match that up.
That's about 300,000?
Three, about 340 this year.
Well, what, what we, what we have on this current Library Board of Trustees, we have very, three very experienced people who worked on a lot of these measures, Sally, Dean and I. So we're used to these things. We're like, on the last one, the UUT tax, we had to answer all of those questions, like you brought up, Annie. So, yeah.
And I'm assuming the city plays a role in, in deciding what, what they want to propose next. You know, like with the UUT, I think the, that they just, what they adopted now is that it goes forever unless it's repealed.
Right.
So that, that's, you know, the city comes up with those positions, you know, in consultation with, with, you know, consultants and people who know about these things. So I'm sure that's a, a conversation that the city will have with people about, you know, how do we want it? Do we want to just renew it for another set number of years? Do we want to, you know, renew it indefinitely unless it's repealed? So there's pieces of it that are, you know, outside of kind of our, our scope, I think. And, and I, I haven't had those conversations with the city yet because we have an interim city manager. So maybe when the new city manager is hired, we can start that conversation so that we can.
Actually, for the library parcel tax, my recollection is that the committee had already been formed. And the committee made a recommendation, because remember, among other things, we had no prior escalation. And that was one thing that we built in to this was at least a, a partial, we, we increased. We didn't change the methodology, but we increased the assessment to capture some, but not all of the CPI that was lost because there was no built-in escalation. But the recommendation came from the committee that supported the parcel tax. It was discussed by the Library Board of Trustees and city council has to actually approve the language that goes on the ballot. So city council is the, the last stop. But most of the work is done in, in preparing those tax measures is done by the committees that are formed to support the measures themselves.
Well, what we'll need is like a timeline so that we, we make sure we, we don't miss out the deadlines. We need to go backwards, like when will that language be, be due, blah, blah, blah. So, uh, yeah.
I, I did ask the city clerk what, what, what collection this would fall on, but I don't think I heard back from her.
So I just am wondering also, how much money do we get from the Friends on an annual basis?
Um, usually it's about $40,000, $45,000.
So I, I, I think from their 990, they're sitting on close to a million dollars. And so, you know, we're going to go out there and ask to raise another million or million three library projects. How do we know the money's going to come to us? Because right now they're sitting on a tremendous amount of money and we're getting not very much at all.
Well, I think mostly that's due to endowment funds, where we can spend only the interest on monies we raise for technology and books. It's just the interest.
I think that's why it'd be helpful to see the financial audit, because I think it gives more information of the 990 does.
And the endowment funds are invested very conservatively.
Yeah. And then there's memorials, you know, you can only spend it on certain things and.
And, and I think, I think Mario, to your point, I think Cindy Chan, the, the consultant, one of her, that's one of the things on her bullet list is, you know, to figure out, uh, how would these, how would the funds be invested? Who's in charge of that? That would all get rolled into the Friends bylaws so that, which is why the endowments are trapped the way they are, because that was what they put in the bylaws. So you wouldn't, you know, the Friends would, you, you would want to make sure that the Friends bylaws reflected the way we think this, this should work, you know? And I think Cindy Chan has the expertise to kind of help us through that piece of it. Yeah.
Well, this has been a good, good discussion. A lot of things that we've got up.
Yeah, Bianca, I just want to go back to one item just to close it out. I did take a quick look and found the list from Kay Ross and Kathy Bolson. And as of April of 2019, they had listed about 100, about $107,400 worth of, of gifts. Let's call it that. They called it gifts, that they had given to the library from the Restoration Concert. And it runs a gamut from carpeting to Steinway piano, to 150 chairs and $29 and so on. And then there's some minor stuff in there, sound systems and what have you. So it's somewhere in that ballpark, Mario, that, that the library has had asset purchase for them from the Restoration Concert.
Kathy, could I just ask, since we've had such a lengthy discussion on this topic, is this recorded so that someone else from the board wanted to hear it? It's on the website?
It'll be on YouTube, on, on the, on the City YouTube channel. I can send you the link once it's.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. The, the meetings are recorded.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody, and for all of your, uh, good questions and comments. And moving on, our last item of discussion, the library operations update. Kathy?
Yeah, I, I'll try to keep this short. It is actually short. I didn't add a whole lot of things. So I wanted to let you know about some programs that are coming up. We are going to be doing a virtual visual presentation called The Rialto Revealed. And that is going to be the Friends of the Rialto founder, Scott Norton, talking about and showing images about the Rialto's restoration. So that's going to be really great. He's got fantastic pictures. I talked to the Shomoff Group, who's the, you know, the developer and, and he's on board and sharing his pictures. So that's going to be happening March 10th. We're going to get the publicity out very shortly. We also, our poet laureate, Ron Curci, and his wife Bianca, came up with a great idea that they were inspired by Amanda Gorman's poem at the inauguration. But also NPR has a poet in residence, and he has done these kind of crowdsourced community poems where people contribute pieces and then he crafts a poem out of the different bits that people contributed. So we're going to do that here in South Pasadena with Ron. So it is going to be, we're going to be calling for submissions like, like the first few weeks of March. And then Ron will have a little bit of time to work on the poem and then we'll be publishing the poem and, and making a big deal about it in April, because April is National Poetry Month. So that's fun and exciting. And I thank you, Bianca and Ron, for coming up with that idea. Uh, we have a whole bunch of, not a whole bunch, we have several author talks in, in the planning stages for later this spring and early summer. And we'll give you more details when, when we're closer to those things. The final progress, just a reminder that our first big meeting with Cersei Dynex, which is our library system vendor, is February 19th. So that is when we should really put most of the things in place that will allow us to officially kind of flip the switch on the backend. All the publicity is ready. You know, we have things to put in books and, and everything. But the actual kind of configuration, hopefully, will be done by the end of February after we've had this meeting with the vendor. The app, I keep telling, I've been telling you for like three meetings that we're this close with the app. And unfortunately, we have another meeting with the, with them about the app next week, because there are a couple of little glitches that are pretty critical. It's supposed to scan your barcode so you can store your, your barcode on your phone and it's not scanning the barcode properly. So there's a few little things, but otherwise it looks fantastic and it's, and we're very, very close. Just FYI, I don't have a lot of COVID updates for you, but we are going to put some signage outside around our picnic tables about mask wearing to see if we can increase mask wearing compliance out there. We'll see if that works. In March, the policies from the Library Administrative Policy Manual that we're going to have ready for you guys to review are the dress code, library card policy, the policy for historic photograph licensing or reproduction, and local history collection policy and the conference room policy. So we'll have a, a series of those for you guys to look at in March. And that is all that I wanted to tell you about what's going on at the library. Everybody's, you know, working really hard. We're very busy.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. All right. So moving on to, on communications. And I, I have nothing more to add to any of the communications. So I'll just go around, looking at my camera here. On Dr. Molina, do you have any communications?
Not really. The only thing that, that, and we talked about this a little bit earlier. I do think it would be good if we got some quarterly financial information that showed us how the library was performing relative to the approved budget, but that's it.
Will do. And again, like David said, we have done that. I think this year we just sort of got off track because it's been such a weird year with, with the budget. But yes, we can definitely do that.
Thank you. Annie, any communications to share with us?
No, thanks.
Uh, David?
No.
Okay. Dean?
What exactly is defined as communications?
Just like if you. Add that's not on the agenda or.
I'd just like to say that I'm, I'm very excited to be part of the board. Those of you who know me, I may seem a little quiet compared to usual. I, I have a tendency to listen the first couple meetings.
listen the first couple of meetings. So.
Thank you. Good. And our Mayor Mahmoud, our council liaison, any?
Okay. I do. First of all, excellent questions, very thoughtful discussion. I value you all on this commission. A question for Kathy. We reduced operating hours. We delayed. How is that working out? Is that proving satisfactory and more comfortable for staff?
Yes, that is, it makes a very big difference to not have so many people together. We have had some onsite exposure. And I'm happy to report that our measures that we have in place seem to have worked. There was no person-to-person spread onsite. So that's great news. It was a little nerve-wracking for a while there, waiting to find out how we were going to do. So I think we did that at the right time and and we're glad we did it. You know, we just need to be really vigilant about our social distancing and our mask wearing, which that's easy. It's the distancing part that we were trying to address with those hours changes. The public, they they don't, they have no, they don't seem to mind at all. Like, nobody has had anything to say about. Oh, I wish you
Right.
Yeah, nobody, they don't mind.
So good to hear. I just was, I attended the Parks and Rec Commission and at that commission, one of the commissioners, at that commission meeting, one of the commissioners noted the absence of masks at the parks and Sheila Pouch mentioned that, well, we keep putting signs up and they keep getting torn down. And as I recall, the signs that have been utilized at our parks are just banners. So I recommended to the city manager that we perhaps consider investing in some metal signs, something more durable. So if you are thinking of adding signs in that bench area, you might wish to consider that and either follow up with Sheila or with Sean to see ultimately what we decided to do. But I think this is going to be a recurring issue. I also want to, first of all, thank you to whoever brought up the issue. I think that was you, Annie, on the parcel tax because our municipal elections, our standard municipal elections are held November of even years. And so depending upon when in twenty twenty-four the parcel tax expires, that might mean that we're looking at a November twenty twenty-two
Oh, my gosh.
And I will also tell you, based upon participation in prior prior initiatives, the absolute drop-dead deadline of getting a measure, which means it has to go to city council, you know, as the last step, and then be submitted to the county registrar voters is at the end of August. So realistically, that means in July, you really want to have everything done because typically city council does not meet the first week of August. And so I would say you should shoot for the end of June to be on the safe side, but knowing that that provides you a bit of buffer in July, but not much.
So the campaign would be like May, June, July, and then right? I mean, the the
the campaign really usually kicks off after Labor Day.
Okay.
Some things before Labor Day, but yeah, Dean is is a veteran of several of these.
Yeah.
Bianca and I have have fire on these. We we really like to get started as early as April or May.
Yes.
In terms of committee organization, the campaign earnest is certainly going to be August through through Election Day. But in order to to really have a robust, and you can see, you know, Sally's got her signs from the last couple there in the background. It really is something that should be on the books in in a committee, the core at least, so it can be formed by April or May.
Yep.
Essentially, I mean, because Diana said the committee plays a part in deciding what the measure actually is. So, yeah, so.
The committee was involved, for example, in that decision to have it be until until repealed as opposed to go again with
Which I hope we will seriously consider for this as well.
Do the trustees play a role in this or is this done by a separate committee?
Separate.
Separate committee.
Because we the trustees, we we can't advocate, as I I believe Mayor Mahmoud was saying, we are able to, and maybe Kathy was saying as well, we are able to participate as individuals and to say, I am a trustee of the the board, but the the trustees themselves are are not involved in advocacy, but we could be involved in education. And that's
Find the argument also in the ballot booklet.
Yeah.
And you also usually are consulted in the design of whatever is presented to city council. This council would want to know that the proposal that's developed by the committee is supported by the board.
Okay.
Well, so so our next move, we just need to find out exactly if we get, if it's November twenty-second, twenty twenty-two or November twenty twenty-four. So Kathy, are you gonna?
I'll follow up. I asked, I already asked that question, but I don't think I got an answer. So I will follow up and find out. Because, yeah, I mean, if that's if that's the case, that it's that it's the November twenty-two election, that means, you know, a year from now, basically, we're going to be
Oh, my God.
I'm pretty sure it is going to be twenty twenty-two. Ellen and I were talking about it at the end of the the last, the Measure U campaign. We get it, we get a year off.
Okay.
Sounds like we have some volunteers already.
Wow, okay. All right. Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Mahmoud. Let's see. Friends of the Library Representative?
I have nothing except the the bookstore people are are so desirous of getting back to the library, but they did a very thoughtful study of all the different situations there in the library, the the small space, the working together, just it just, I wrote a whole report. It can't really do, can't really put the bookstore back in operation now. There are just too many things. They just can't do it.
Yeah, and and they they kind of look and see and think about it. And I just, again, based on the fact that we had our own infections happening and and the rates that have been in the community, I asked them, let's let's wait a little bit longer. I mean, there are other things, there are other ways that they could be selling books, but they don't really have the the staffing or the capacity to do some of the other options we've thought about. So we have to wait a little bit longer.
And you know, there's about fifty of them, I learned from Marcia. And a number of them aren't going to come back. Probably. So they they're going to need even more help because they stay open, they're open every single day.
Which maybe has to change. We'll have to see.
Yeah.
Any, anything else, Sally? Was that?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. And then, David, as the trustee of the Friends?
Yeah, I attended the last meetings, which was, it was two meetings, really, with an annual meeting in which the budget was approved. And also a new position was highlighted, a stewardship. Have I got that right, Kathy? Stewartship, which was to thank and recognize donors. And then during the regular meeting, there was more discussion in terms of, and this was for new new people to the board as to where the finances were coming from and how all of that. I did make a note there. Correct me if I'm wrong, Kathy, on this, but the the book endowment fund and the technology endowment fund, the combination of the interest from those two funds, which presumably was for a whole year's interest, was under under six thousand, a little under six thousand.
Yeah.
I wish I had.
So Mario, to put that in, you know, that gives you a perspective of, you know, we have these large endowments
That's correct. That's about right, David, those numbers. Yeah.
Any, anything else, David?
No.
Okay, thank you. And back to you, Kathy.
I had just one other thing that I wanted to share that we just found out today that we're excited about. The children's department staff applied to participate in a special training program that that's through the California State Library and it's called Early Learning with Families. So they'll go through quite an extensive training and the purpose is to kind of focus on child development and and using strategies to engage with families, children and their caretakers and provide library services. So it's going to be really, a really great thing for them. And I'm excited that that they took the initiative to apply and get it. So we'll see where the that, what that looks like for them after they've gone through that process. And then, of course, our anti-bias training, which I sent you in case you were interested in following along, is starts not next week, but the week after. And I don't have anything else.
Okay, thank you. All right, any, before we sign off here, any other things that popped into anybody's head?
Yeah, I I would like to ask Annie how you say the traditional greeting for Happy New Year in Chinese. Because whenever I try it, people laugh at me.
Yeah, so in Cantonese, it's Gong He Fat Choi, and in Mandarin, it's Gong Shi Fat Tai. And so my family is, between me and my husband, all of those. And so and then there's, you know, it's Lunar New Year, so it's in Korean and Vietnamese and everything else, but Gong He Fat Choi. Gong He Fat Choi is probably the easiest.
Thank you.
And does anybody have a pet ox around? Well, again, everybody, so we'll adjourn this meeting for in in honor of the Lunar New Year. Happy Lunar New Year, everybody. And the meeting is over at eight forty-three. Thank you, everybody. This was a really good discussion in regards to you know, the trustees manual and the most important thing, the Twenty-First Century Committee. So I think it was a very good Yeah.
Thank you.
Of your background, Annie, it's really pretty.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, everyone. And thanks, Sean and Kathy.
Yep. Good night, everybody.